Welcome, everyone. This is our September first Plan Commission meeting. We'll take a moment for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All right, roll call. So Pamela?
Here.
Eduardo? Not here. Bob Essa?
Here.
Michael Anderson? Not here. Laura?
Yeah, I'm here.
Christian Pico?
Here.
Michelangelo Lieberman here. And Mark is with COVID.
Oh, that's awful.
We've all been there.
Have we let people in? I mean, maybe somebody's online.
Do we have anyone online for the Zoom? That there may be a Zoom, I guess, with the Paul Travis Engineering? I don't know if they're coming in person or not. Or if this is just, it might just be a standing spot on our agenda for when they do attend.
I, I don't have.
Got it.
Yeah, I don't have the information, so.
They have my number, so if we get texts. Okay, great. All right, so we're gonna just quickly, a motion to approve the minutes. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, approved. So sewer waste committee update. I'm assuming that no one's here from that, right? Uh, you're not with Quest?
No, we're not.
Okay. And you're not with D and B Engineering? All right, just making sure. You're new. We'll get to you soon. Okay, updates by village planner Alec Wallach. I'm assuming he's not called in or... This might be a quicker meeting than usual. All righty. Um, I guess maybe we can just quickly open it up as to just talk about maybe the Village Master Plan. Um, if anyone had attended the previous charrette, um, and had any points or things they wanted to bring up now.
There was just one thing curious about the draft. And, and I was not able to attend the, um, public meeting about the draft. But in regards to what Pamela and I have been working on with senior seasoned citizens, there was only two mentions of anything about the, um, in the plan addressing this population. And they were very short. And one said that, yes, we do have quite a bit of an aging population. And two, um, there really aren't anything for them right now. So, um, I thought that was curious, uh, given the fact that the demographics support, um, a major population being so-called seniors. And that, that's all I have to say.
Is this something you think we should make comments to the, um, the Zultant? Or to the steering committee and?
Is, okay, the steering committee is, is us.
Is not us.
Not us.
Steering committee was Bill Chamber. No, excuse me, not Bill Chamber, uh, Bill.
Manger.
Manger, thank you.
Bill Manger.
Too many, too many commissions, too many boards.
Yes, right.
I don't know who else is on the steering committee at this time. But maybe this is something we can stuffs at a later date and then.
Ellen Scott.
Ellen Scott stepped up?
I'm sorry?
Ellen Scott is on the steering committee along with, uh.
Are they gonna be presenting another, another?
They should be. We should have them back. Well, I mean, that's really Alex Wallach, I guess. So why don't we save that for when Alex is present next and we can bring it up to attention.
Okay, all right, that's fine, sure.
Okay, so some of these other topics that Alex was gonna cover, um, I think we'll have to save for when we speak with him again next. Um, so I'll skip to number six. So we have a, I'm welcoming you, Patrick. I think you can, is the podium our new, uh, place of introducing individuals? Patrick, welcome.
Hi.
So congratulations that you're now serving as assistant to the village mayor.
Yes, uh, Mark invited me to just come and, uh, introduce myself. My name's Patrick Durens. Uh, I started, uh, this position about three weeks ago at this point. Um, so I'm rather new, still learning. Um, previously, I had worked for the town supervisor of Riverhead, um, in a similar position. And then, uh, I had also worked for the presiding officer of the Suffolk County Legislature. Um, before here, I was working for the Suffolk County Parks Department, um, and, um, I'm really excited to be here.
Are you an arborist?
I know a couple now.
Will you be attending these meetings, you think, in the future or depending on the?
Uh, it kinda will depend on my schedule, um, but I'd be happy to.
It'd be great to have a direct connection to the mayor.
Yes, it would, really.
One line there. All right, thank you, Patrick. Glad you're attending and hopefully stick around. I don't anticipate this being a long meeting considering.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Perhaps we don't have Zoom. Um, okay, so updates on the recent efforts with Plan Commission and our task force. Senior Center, um, would you two like to speak to that?
Go ahead. Um, haven't gotten an appointment with Trustee Brown, right? No. Um, I don't know that I have anything, we have anything more than what I was attempting to say last week. Um, in that the, um, library has lots of stuff for older people. And, and they have teas and lunches and they have programs and everything. Uh, we found out the museum, the historical museum, has something once or twice a year. And, um, the different churches have something once or twice a year or are trying to. They are either actively doing it or trying to get into doing it. So that there might not be something going on like every week for them, but there's a lot. You know, 'cause it's, the senior group that, that, that's being addressed is, a lot of them don't drive. You know, they don't do a lot of things. It's a lot of work to get the, the, the transportation set up. The town, um, um, what's it called? Senior group, Senior Center? Will arrange transportation. Um, the one actually in Bridgehampton is the one that arranges the transportation for the Southampton people. So there is somebody that does that. I think probably a little bit more would be necessary 'cause they can't move everybody at the same time. But there are a number of places that are really anxious to, to do things. Or they are already doing things. Um, and are very pleased with what they're doing and, and all. Uh, and to get into the, as I said, the town, uh, center will pick people up and take them over to the Senior Center anytime they wanna go. 'Cause they just, you know, that's what it's there for. Uh, Laura and I were over in Hampton Bays. That place is one busy thing.
Yes, it is.
You know, and there's lunch going on and there's people with programs and people signing up for things. And there, there's actually a lot more going on than.
Pamela, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just, I'm getting text messages from Alex.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that now.
Okay, they just, they just said send them the Zoom link to their email if you can.
I would.
Okay, great, sorry.
Well, I, do you, um?
I'm not getting service.
I don't have his email.
I have it.
You have the?
Yeah, and which Zoom link are we sending?
I'll tell you, say.
Sorry, I must have a Zoom link too.
Sorry, Pamela.
That's okay.
Well, no, 'cause I have to make a Zoom.
Are you okay?
If you text me the Zoom link, I can send it to you text.
Yep.
For whatever reason, I can't get to my email.
Yeah, let me just, uh.
Go ahead.
I, we personally think that the village, um, maybe the way into this, working with the seniors, would be if they could, you know, co- let the, let them all know what's going on. Because there is a lot going on. Now, if the village eventually wants to get into having programs and stuff, that'd be wonderful. But I think that right now, if they could send emails to everybody or letters to those who don't use email, telling them, um, about what's available for them and the rides that are available for them and the functions that are available for them, I think you'd get a lot of people interested. But i- if they don't know what's going on, they can't get there. Um, I know at St. John's, they have a, a big knitting thing and, um, and those, that's something that, you know, us older people like to do. And, um, but they have to know that it's there. And I think that that's the biggest fall down right now in the village is that there's no communication directly with these people to let them know what's going on. Um, as I, we were just blown away by what goes on at the town center. And I haven't been to the one in Bridgehampton.
No, I'm, 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 I'm gonna go there. Um, go ahead.
But that's, you know, but there's two of them now. There's, we're told that a lot of the seniors are annoyed that there isn't one in Southampton. But with one in Bridgehampton and one in Hampton Bays, they're not gonna put one here. Plus, where would they put it? You know, so, um, there's not a lot of buildings running around empty here, as we've found out. So, yeah, that's kind of how we're looking at things.
Well, I think, I think what we wanna do going forward is take all the information that we compiled from the interviews with various people and with suggestions for, uh, better communication at least, if not a larger commit- committee under the community, under the village, that deals with senior issues, uh, rather than just one person. I think that Pamela and I will probably try to formal, formalize something in, in writing to present to Trustee Brown and to this commission, of course, uh, about our findings, about our suggestions, and see where it goes from there. I think that that's the step where we are. Um, and so it's just a matter of putting it on paper and organizing it and getting with Trustee Brown, which is, has proved to be somewhat difficult, but, you know, we'll keep knocking.
Have we reached out to the town at all as well?
To the town.
Mm-hmm. Since they have the facilities and how, maybe they have outreach information and?
We, well, that's exactly what Pamela said. We, we sat down with Laura Pettit.
Got it, okay, I apologize.
At Hampton Bays, um, Senior Center and spoke to her at length. And of course, she is the appointee by the town of Southampton.
Yeah.
And we learned a lot that the town actually can provide. That will be part of our, um, written, um, suggestions, um, that, what we have found out that they can provide. They can provide, uh, transportation, they can provide food, they can provide transportation not only to us, a place, but also to doctors. Uh, we have all this information.
They even provide minor maintenance.
Yes.
For people if they have a problem.
Interestingly enough, I know there was an item in the paper about Cindy McNamara, um, partnering with Heart of the Hamptons for assistance, um.
Is it today's day?
Senior assistants to go shopping and to the doctors and stuff. I don't know if y'all saw it?
I did not.
Okay, well, that's new.
Well, hu- human resources used to do that.
Yeah, well, now their Heart of the Hamptons has sort of taken that on, I guess. Anyway, where we are is fact finding is almost done, recommendations will follow.
Okay.
Um, question, um, I understand that you met with Liz Burns, administrator of the library.
Oh, you're on the board, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. She was excited to hear about what you wanted to do. And now that I will be joining the board actually earlier than January first, but rather next week, uh, is there anything I can do to help and coordinate things that, uh, might?
Well, not at this point, I don't think, Christian, because we've gotta do sort of list our, our findings and recommendations. Now, my meeting with Liz was great, um.
She's really on top of all of this.
She's a wonderful person.
And she has offered, um, the Cooper House as a possible meeting place.
It's a great place.
And, um, she's, uh, as you know, the library does lots of services for the, for seniors. And, um, they also have a senior advocate that comes, I think, once a month or twice a month. Yeah, I've sat down with her. So, um, when you get our recommendations and our fact finding, then, then I think we proceed from there.
Okay.
But Liz is well aware of, of.
Yes, I, I know she's well aware and welcomes the idea. If there's anything I can do as a board member, she'd be happy to coordinate.
Well, I'm sure it'll go before your board, whatever, whatever we recommend.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I, I apologize. I've been looking at my phone, trying to coordinate with Alex and Charles. Okay. He is on? No, it's okay. So for those of you with the public, uh, welcome to our new system. Okay, great. Hey, Alex, sorry, uh, it sounds, looks like we have you with us. I don't know how the audio is, though. Hey, Alex, can you hear us?
One second.
Oops, sorry. We got, you're a whisper in the wind.
One second. One second. This might be, uh, interesting, so you know.
Alex, it maybe, did you hopefully send that to Jolie as well?
Yeah, I did.
Great, thank you.
Can you hear?
I might be the only one on the board who can hear it, but.
I can hear someone affected you the youngest.
I, I'm not gonna say that.
Can you say something, Alex?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Bob? Can you hear?
Yeah.
All right, never mind. Yeah, we're, we're a group of young whippersnappers up here.
All right, great.
So Alex, we skipped ahead, um, to the update on our, uh, Plan Commission efforts, but we'll come back, why don't we circle back to you now if you wanted to go through, um, some of your talking points.
Uh, sure, I'm just pulling up the agenda now. Is there anything in particular, um, that you wanted to, uh, read to, to talk on?
Well, we recently just had that charrette with the master plan, so maybe there was something that came of that, that you could maybe introduce to us today.
Yeah, that's right. So the, uh, the Board of Trustees held a public hearing, uh, on the master plan. They received, um, several comments from people that came and spoke and provided input. So now the plan is back with the consultants who are analyzing those comments, uh, making some final tweaks to the plan. And they're gonna present it back to the trustees, um, possibly for, uh, for adoption if they're satisfied when all the comments have been, have been addressed.
Do we anticipate that the trustees will refer back to the Planning Commission for us to provide comments?
Uh, I think the comment period, um, ended with the public hearing. And I think they were gonna take written comments up until the point where it was, uh, adopted. So if there are any, uh, written comments, obviously just getting them to the, uh, village clerk ideally this week. I think they were holding the, the written comments open just to the end of the month.
Okay, so the end of the month as in September or August?
I think it was ideally the, um, the end of August.
Okay.
So, so, Alex, the next public hearing, uh, for adoption will be the September session?
For adoption?
I believe that's right. Um, I have to check the, uh, the trustee's agenda. I don't know if they're holding, um, further public hearings at this point or they're just gonna schedule it for, uh, for a vote.
He didn't, he, so he closed the public hearing then? Or the, excuse me, the board?
The public hearing was closed, uh, at the last one in, in August. Uh, they felt that everybody had given, uh, given an opportunity to speak. Um, and the comments raised weren't a lot of, uh, substantial ones. There were a couple of tweaks, uh, here and there that I think that they felt that they could make.
If you were, excuse me, Alex, if you were gonna submit comments to the village clerk, is there a time period when you should do that?
Uh, I'm not sure when they are accepting written comments until, I thought at the hearing they said until the end of the month. Um, so, and the, uh, and the consultants are planning to submit a, a memo very soon to the trustees summarizing the changes that they've made. So I would try, um, if you have written comments, to get them in, um, by tomorrow if possible.
By tomorrow?
Okay.
All right, so Friday or later day weekend, really?
Any topics that you wanna touch on as well? If you wanna touch on any of these other topics. I know there's, I know one that, uh, interests to me is the demolition permit requirements and recycling. If that, uh, code, uh, update is how, what's the process or, excuse me, progress?
Sorry, did you say on demolition?
The demolition permit requirements and recycling? So I was just curious as to where we are with that, uh, code amendment.
Uh, I'm not sure, uh, which one by recycling. I know for the demolition permit, there's a suggestion in the code that for buildings, uh, older than a certain age, that a demolition permit be accompanied by, um, a proposal for something that's going to replace it. So that, uh, the board can understand, uh, what's being built, that it's gonna be in a compatible size and context and massive. That's a recommendation that's in the plan. So if the plan is adopted and that recommendation, um, is in it, the, uh, the Board of Trustees could possibly take up a code amendment that would implement that.
Okay.
One question I have is, uh, what would be the fine if they tore a building down without getting a demolition permit?
Without getting a demolition permit? So that would be subject to, uh, they would be in violation of the code. Uh, and they would be, um, assessed off fines, I'm assuming, by, uh, by code enforcement.
Yeah, but what fine would they?
Uh, that's a question for, uh, for code enforcement. Of course, I don't have that information.
Because I was on the board, they did it, they did demolition like that without getting proof to our house down on Lewis Street. And the fine was eight hundred dollars.
Wow, okay. Yeah, that's something that I, I will make a note to, uh, to see if the, the code enforcement can give us inform- information on it. If that's something that they would be able to give us an answer to. Um, I know the building department is dealing with a similar situation right now where we have people who have exceeded their, uh, their permits and effectively, um, demolished buildings.
What about the recycling of building materials that are demolished? Is that addressed anywhere?
I don't believe, I don't know if the plan would not speak to that.
Hmm, that's a shame.
Yeah, that is a shame. Um, I think that's something we've talked about with the mayor, the, the concept of reuse. You know, that third R that is often ignored when we think about reduce, recycle, and then, of course, reuse. Um, okay, so may, perhaps is there an update on the RFP for the architectural and historic structures for the reconnaissance survey?
Yes, that's right. So a, a consultant team has been selected. The mayor has signed off on, uh, the contract. And we just, um, this week had a kickoff, kickoff call with them. Their name is Preservation Studios. They did a very similar project for the village of Greenport. And provided them with a very thorough and detailed report. Um, so we met with, uh, with our village administrator, with some of the members of the architectural review board. Um, we had a coordination call with, um, the staff at the state, um, who's, uh, who's working with us and is partially, um, funding this project. So their plan is to, um, they're, they're starting their research now. They're doing a lot of analysis of the work that's been done to date. And on Monday, September 12th, they're going to be, um, in the village. Um, we're gonna have an in-person meeting with them. They're going to be driving up and down every street of, of the village, um, in those, those couple of days. And there's going to be a presentation at five PM, um, to the ARV and to anyone in public about, well, where they are in that, in that, um, in that project, uh, next steps moving forward.
Great, thank you for the summary there. Sounds like there's major progress. And this, uh, presentation, excuse me, Preservation Studies, where are they based out of?
Um, I believe they have offices in New York, um, and, but I think the, uh, they're based out of Buffalo, New York.
So they're a larger firm than the, oh, great. Uh, that's awesome.
Alex?
Yeah?
I, I wanna go back to what my colleague, Mr. Essa, said about the violations for tearing down a building. Generally, uh, the code refers to, um, Article Two penalty and offenses at the beginning of the code. And it talks about penal law in the state of New York punishable by a fine not exceeding $2,000 or imprisonment for not exceeding fifteen days. Um, and most of our code goes back and refers to that first line of that, um, Article Two. And to me, um, I would hope that for something like this, the referral, uh, two penalties would not be to that Article Two, but something a bit more serious than a couple of thousand bucks. So I really wanna make the point that Mr. Essa made to drive that.
May I make a suggestion? I made a suggestion years ago that they, uh, we banned from doing anything to property for two years and then have to reapply all over again. The $2,000 or $800 fine is just peanuts when they sell a house for four million dollars.
Forty.
Maybe it should be a percentage.
Is that something that we could? Yeah, is that something we can perhaps bring to the board's attention?
Cause you said, what, $2,000 fine?
It is the state, New York State Penal Law that it refers to, which is just not right and insufficient. So Alex, this is, what's the, I mean, how does one bring this up?
I mean, we typically would hold a little vote here if this is something of a topic that's of interest to us. And we could either champion and explore and research it further, which doesn't sound like we need to. Or we could formally let the board know that this is something we'd like them to consider.
And I, I think if you do it, it might be a little bit easier if you were able to submit that in the form of a, uh, of a, of a, of a code amendment. It gives the board something, uh, to respond to. If there's something specific that you'd like to see changed.
So you, I'm sorry, just to hear you more clearly. Uh, so you'd like us to write a, the code amendment? Or you would like us to write a recommendation for a code amendment to suggest a higher fine and/or a scale or, um, by the percentage?
It's a, a suggestion, it's up, up to the board. Uh, but typically, if you're able to suggest something in the form of a code amendment, it makes it a little bit easier for the trustees to respond to rather than having to draft something from scratch. So if that's something that you speak to the trustees and you feel that they're amenable to, that might be one approach to take.
Okay. I think that's something we might wanna.
I, it's perhaps putting the cart before the horse. Let me explain. So once they start rewriting the code and do a new draft for that particular issue, there will be a public hearing for it. And it is at that time that you bring up the issue of the offense, to not go back to Article Two, but to have a specific part of offense in that section of the code. My view.
Yes, and then, and then if we could see a draft before it goes to public hearing to, in, uh, well, to, to review with that offense, uh, whatever in mind, if it's in the draft.
Sure, you could ask for that.
We could ask for that. A draft of the revision about the demolition to include an, uh, an offense policy? Okay.
Alex, are you hearing us okay or is there a delay, you think?
I don't know if he heard me.
I'm sorry, there's a little bit, it's a little hard to hear towards the end of it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead and say, he hears you guys well, so go ahead.
All right, Chris.
Alex, um, do, do I need to repeat what I said earlier?
Um, I heard you say something about whether, about the code being rewritten?
Right. So, uh, in the issue of demolition, uh, as defined in the master plan, what I would expect to happen is that a law revision would be proposed through a public hearing. It is at that time that suggestion could be made for, uh, an offense section embedded in that particular section of the code that is specific for demolition as opposed to referring to Article Two in New York State Penal Law.
Imagine that, that, because there are recommendations in the code about demolition, that then, that may be one of many code changes that are, uh, proposed after the plan is adopted.
All right, thank you.
After the plan is adopted, okay. And would it be possible, Alec, to get a review of a draft of that, um, rewrite of the code before it goes to public hearing for the Planning Commission?
It's a good question. It's something that would come through the trustees. So I'm not sure, um, it necessarily would come through, through our office. Uh, but certainly that's a request that I think this board could make of the, of the trustees.
Okay, make it of the trustees. Okay, thank you.
So, am I not mistaken in thinking that we should formally request that the trustees look into this? Or consider it?
Well, um, I think this commission is saying that it would like to see drafts before public hearings to give us time. Um, and so the, what I think the commission is saying is that it wants to submit to the Board of Trustees a request to see such drafts as they relate to, uh, the master plan.
And specifically to issues of the master plan, yeah.
Right, so any rewriting and redrafting that will go on over the next eighteen, twenty-four months as far as code is concerned, there will be public hearings for it. And what the commission would like, uh, per Article 20 of the code, given its, uh, responsibility to the implementation of the master plan, that it should see such, um, uh, such drafts.
Yes.
Is there a board member, do you think, that would be interested in this specifically? That we should be in touch with?
I think, uh, Bill Manger, um, as you know, was part of the steering committee for the master plan.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And it's, uh, to, uh, building and, and planning departments. So that would be the, the overall choice.
The chair, co-chair of the Planning Commission? I, I think the, the chair, co-chair of the planning commission, for and on behalf of it, should submit such request to Bill Manger with copy to the rest of the Board of Trustees, is my view.
Okay.
Are we all in agreement about that, I mean, should we take a vote on that, or is that fine?
Yeah, I think it might be appropriate to take a vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, okay, so I will reach out to Bill Manger and, uh, we'll begin the process. Um, do we wanna look at the village's building department to accept town issued home improvement contract license and statutes of intermunicipal agreement? I'm assuming this is in relation to the town and, uh, the licensing agreement and having access to the town's, uh, process, if I'm not mistaken?
Uh, that's correct, and I believe that was passed by the trustees, and I think what may have to follow is a, um, intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town to, uh, to actuate that.
It, it's a reciprocity agreement, so we still don't have that in place?
Um, I don't know if the, uh, if the I M A is in place, but I know that the trustees did adopt the requirement that, uh, contractors in the village have the town license rather than the county license. I think that was adopted at one of the last meetings.
So specifically on chapter one oh seven that I worked on, for example, on, um, legislation for, uh, leaf blowers. Uh, we addressed reciprocity agreement in the code, uh, which was, uh, passed, but effectively we don't have a reciprocity agreement yet.
I think that's something, um, that's being worked on between the town and the village.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so since we have Alex here, and I think we can move to, back to, uh, an update on the recent efforts of the planning commission, and we can speak to the tree board, Tree USA initiative, cause Alex, you're still here, and I know you've been putting a lot of work into the revisions of that code. Christian or, or Laura, do you, either of you wanna field this or open up?
Go ahead.
Um, so just to keep you up to date, um, Alex, thank you for the work that you've done. Um, the tree task force with Laura Devini, uh, Michael Andrew Liberman, and Michael Anderson, and myself will meet on Wednesday at four thirty to go through the draft and make some recom- final recommendations to you. Uh, and, um, uh, so that's, so we should have them probably within a week, ten days post next, uh, next, uh, next Wednesday. Uh, we'll then have to, uh, secure some, uh, time with, uh, village council, Ken Gray. And, uh, I wanted to share with you, um, the path thereafter. Uh, so the delivery of this draft, uh, to the Board of Trustee is scheduled for September thirtieth. So all of us on the task force and you, Alex, will make sure that we get that by September thirtieth. It will be, uh, slated for public hearing on October thirteenth. I've already, um, secured space for that with the, um, village administrator and, and, uh, and Kathy. Uh, and assume that we'll have a full room on that day on the subject, uh, with good comments. We'll have a second public hearing on November tenth, and by then we should have a resolution to adopt to revise Southampton Village Code one oh seven. Resolution will also nominate, uh, members of the tree committee, um, and we'll have this completed therefore by November tenth. At which point we'll start the application for the Tree City U S A in lobby for the, um, Arbor Day Foundation, um, out in, I forget where they are, in Kansas somewhere.
I think so.
And, uh, and hopefully we'll have that, um, label, uh, for the Southampton Village in Q one, Q two of, uh, twenty twenty-three, so that's the plan. Uh, thereafter, obviously D P W organization policies, procedures for trees, uh, will be worked on, um, you know, sometimes in Q one twenty-three, once we get there.
Um, Alex, I sent you by email, um, my review of your draft, did you receive it?
I did see them ear- earlier today, I think what we need to do is, um, forward them to Mark, that he has the, the latest draft to, uh, to address those changes suggested.
Okay, well, um, I, I also sent it to our task force, um, just to keep you in the loop, and I, I wanted to, uh, thank you very much for your draft. It was very thorough and very well done, and I don't see any major changes to your draft. So hopefully after the meeting that we have with the task force on Wednesday, it will be fairly simple to send to you, um, for a final, final draft.
Thank you.
A- Alex, I had a couple of questions, um, uh, D P W superintendent, um, uh, do we have one, where are we with that?
I understand that, uh, Gary is still, uh, present as superintendent of D P W, but he ha- he is in the process of, of retiring. I'm not sure when his last date, uh, is or where they are with, um, selecting a replacement.
Okay, and the second question is, uh, the arborist, do we have on staff an arborist?
Well.
Uh, not, I do not know, not in, uh, in my department.
I was just thinking that if any, any fi- hiring of a new Department of Public Works person might include that he's an arborist? As a qualification, since Gary was one, it would be very nice to have another one. Um, and I know that's probably not your department, but I'm gonna just put it out there.
Sure, that's a good suggestion, that's certainly about my pay grade.
Okay.
All right, thank you, um, so the real estate acquisition task force, um, who is championing that?
Um, um, Michael Anderson.
Michael and, and Ivan, kinda working on that.
Okay. Do you have an update, or do you, we want to wait for Michael?
Um, yeah, cause I, when I, Mark sent me an email not too long ago asking, you know, what we had found, um, and what, what we have found so far. Um, Mark has this wonderful idea that these people are gonna wanna donate their property to the village. And I told him what the values on both of these properties were, and I don't really think, I don't think they held on to these properties all this long to donate them, I just don't think so. Um, plus they're, the ones that I know of aren't in great, i- i- it depends what you wanna use it for, and if you just wanna sterilize it and have it, um, never developed, um, you know, well, that's fine. But that also takes a lot off of tax rolls and stuff, and, um, uh, but they're not good places for parks. You know, it's, I don't think the neighborhood would react to them quite well, cause they're just, they're only eight, uh, uh, probably acre lots, you know, one's a little bit bigger than an acre. Um, they're not big enough to do a whole lot of anything but cause an intense amount of noise to the neighbors, so I'm, I'm not sure, you know, um. And of course, there's a lot of agricultural lots, but they have their own, all their own paperwork that goes along with them. Uh, um, so I don't, I don't know if Michael found any, anything more or discovered someone who wants to donate it. But, um, that's kinda where we were the last discussion on the subject.
Okay, so perhaps we'll hear from Michael at the next meeting and see if there's been an update. Um, the mobility task force, who is heading that? I'm heading the mobility task force?
What's you?
Well, it's not on my radar, but if I am, I guess it will now be on my radar.
Well, one thing I did is I, I got the phone number for the state highway department as far as who's in charge of lights. I found out the state of New York only has one light in our area, and that's at Hampton Road and Montauk Highway. I made suggesting them to have left-hand turning arrows put in it, he said they were gonna do a study on. He also gave me the phone number for the county who's in charge of the rest of the lights. And they were gonna, I called them, and they were gonna send an engineering saying, now all of a sudden I see the traffic counting device is put on the road, so I guess they must have, uh, I mean, you don't need to just try to make a left-hand turn.
Yeah, my understanding is the required permits, I think, on some of these roads in the state and the county?
Well, it's, I don't know how, that they have to do a su- survey, that's much I do know.
Okay.
The other thing I wanna mention in the village, you're coming on Job's Lane heading west. You get the, you get that left-hand turning arrow, but the other side doesn't know that they have a left-hand turning arrow. And then when the light turns green, the other side, the people who are heading west don't know that they've got the green light, it's kinda very confusing. That should be corrected, it should be set up like they do in Florida. Green light, left-hand turning out, everybody else is red, and then that turns red and the other side goes green. It seems to work very fine, but trying to make a left-hand turnaround here, it is almost impossible.
So Bob, I might have to circle back with you, so, to, uh, get a better handle on what we should be doing with the ta- this mobility task force and the parking app study, um, and some of these other proposed, uh.
Well, it's just, as far as parking, Mo- when Moon Grady and myself, or Moon brought this parking garage up, and everybody was dead opposed to it. Until I started to see how they build parking garages in Florida, you do not know they're parking garages, they look like regular buildings. And I brought this point up, is the village itself is about built out, but our outlined community is getting developed. All the areas that I remember used to be old woods, there's houses in it, and we've become the commercial hub. And I don't know if we have really enough parking spaces, and the only rea- only way we can do is to go up, cause I don't know of any other vacant land left. And we talked about, I think, uh, um, Sammy C Mac mentioned about putting a parking garage in a parking lot behind it and saying stores on one side and a parking.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, you can hide a parking garage in a way that you never know it's there, and then you can create alleys and multi-use, uh, business in the, on the lower level. And, you know, cre- expand our commercial district, you know, so we just don't have cement. Um, but it's, it's costly, um, and I, I don't know what the master plan, if they have any recommendations regarding, um, a parking facility in the rear, uh, portion of, uh, downtown village. Uh, is that something you know anything about, Alex, with recommendations in the master plan, if they've contemplated parking, uh, garages?
Um, I don't believe a parking garage was mentioned, I think what is suggested is there'd be a parking management study that analyzes how much of the parking is used and what the demand is. Uh, and then suggests things that may help, uh, better utilization.
Yeah, cause if they're suggesting more or higher buildings and or zoning recommendations that increase density, then some of these might need to be considered. Um, but I guess, so if they're recommending a further study, then we'll, it'll reveal itself. Um, okay, Bob, is there anything else in, in our task force that I should be made aware of now?
Did, only one other thing, yeah, this really doesn't have anything to do with the village, it's more of has to do with watermill. Um, the bottleneck in watermill, I see, is coming down Little Cob Road, merging in, and then trying to make a left-hand turn off of Mill Road onto Montauk Highway. Now, over on Skullahole Road and Strong Lane and Head upon Road, the town made Strong Lane a dead-end street.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
And they, they corrected that, what they should do is Little Cob Road should make that a dead-end street and make no left-hand turns allowed on Mill Road, and that would help clear up some of the bottleneck and, and get the traffic moving somewhat. And hopefully get it somewhat out of the village.
Yeah, maybe that should be a study then for, is it, is that a county road then, that's a county road?
The town. No, Cobb, it's town.
The village should send to the town to do something.
Town, town.
I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not sure who owns that road, it could be the state or it could be the county.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I see this for a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could be the county.
So we're talking about Little Cob Road, you'd want to ha- have a dead end?
Dead end.
I don't know, I mean, it might be something we should talk in a work session.
Yeah.
We'd be making that recommendation?
No, it, you, you could, um, I'm trying to think, Strong Lane, you can go into Strong Lane from Skullahole, but you can't come out.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then Mill Road should be made only right-hand turns, no left-hand turn, because it just, you see them coming out of there and they're trying to merge in, you're lucky you don't hit anybody.
Really?
I mean.
It's a mess.
But isn't this a matter though for the town to deal with?
Town, yes.
Well, this is a question, I think that the village should send a letter to the town.
I'm not sure, I agree.
I, again, I don't know whose road that is, I don't know if that's the state or the county.
So we'll, we'll look into it a little bit further and we'll revisit this.
Okay.
Um, but thank you, Bob. Um, I'm gonna assume that's the last of the mobility task force that I'm heading. Um, so the term limit task force, I know I'm not heading this one.
I'm sorry, um, just to finish on mobility, there was a discussion for a while to have these, 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 um, what do you call it, these, uh?
Speed lines?
No, um, 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 I forget what they're called, these two-wheeler things, uh.
Oh, right, that's why I ended up being, heading this, okay, yeah, bird, um, the scooters, right, electric scooters.
Yeah, that's right.
Bird, yeah, that's right, scooters, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, I, well.
I show my age now.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think we wanted to pursue that, right, is that something that?
Um.
Well, it's, I know, there are case studies where the, the, it gets out of hand, especially cause I believe this is a dockless system, meaning that you could leave these, uh, scooters all over the place.
Call over the place, yeah.
And so when we launched the bike share program in the town with a dockless system, we found that to be problematic. Um, so right now I think we have a dock-to-dock system at the town, and that's been a, a better fit. I don't know if this makes sense, especially because we closed down two of our roads to biking, or excuse me, four roads in the downtown area to biking, I can't imagine, you know.
That's true, that's right, so.
Just having a lot of options.
So is that bird initiative that?
Uh, I haven't heard from them in a while.
Just table it?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I, I don't think that, um, you know, given the age of the population, that that's really something I'm gonna hop on.
No, but there, there's, you know, the, the summer population and, you know.
No, I understand, but, and they're.
A healthier community has a, a spread demographic.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're, and they're all in their cars.
Well, just from my experience where, um, they do use these things, um, in certain cities in the U S and a lot in Europe, what I see is just chaos.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and danger, um.
I do too.
And I just don't think it's a good idea.
I've seen them in, in parks, you know, large parks and.
I think it would be appropriate if we had the infrastructure to accommodate it, so like multi-modal transportation routes, you know, which we don't currently have, so it gets to the chicken or the egg conversation of, do we increase the us- usership and the culture, change the culture of using these non, you know, car, uh, uh, alternative modes of transportation?
Well, well, that, that's, that's one sug- of course, yes, of course.
Yeah. Or do we build the routes, and then if we build it, they will come, you know, it's the, the age all debate.
Well. Well, and the dockless thing has to be addressed.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if there, there will be other organizations that reach out, bird has, has been silent for months, hence why I forgot I was sharing this.
There's, there's one thing I want, I brought up, the other day I went down, um, Holsey Street, we, all the construction and cars parked the other side of the road.
Uh-huh.
Only making one lane traffic.
I know, it's awful.
Now, I grew up on Jennings and Hill, somebody threw a party there a couple of days ago, and the cars parked on both sides of the road, there's no way we could've gotten in it with a fire truck.
Wow.
These landscape trailers take up one lane completely, and if somebody parks across the street, you're down to just barely making it through.
Man, that's a good point.
Well, we just go back to the old age question of code enforcement or lack thereof, um, in Southampton Village. I mean, that's the core of the issue, and then we go down to the next step, which is the court system, once you have a court enforcement violation and dealing with it, so that's where it stuck.
I, I think that if you made a, a rule that everybody parks on one side of the road, so there's way to get through, and everybody knew about that rule? You couldn't stop the phones ringing to report it, you wouldn't even need someone driving around to see whether it was being enforced or not.
One other thing.
Cause everybody hates it, you know.
I have to mention is when they buy these houses and renovate them, instead of having saying six being able, six, six cars, you, you're lucky to get three in the driveway. They reduced it down, they want more yardage.
Yeah.
And then they park out in the street, when I grew up in this town, you never found anybody parking on the street.
Home's got a lot bigger.
Yeah, well, everybody's got a car, you know, from age sixteen to.
Yeah, but you still had room, now I can think of one, Joe Romanowski's father-in-law lived on Layton Avenue, he had a two-car garage, two cars in there, two behind it, and two more in the driveway. Well, they renovated it now that maybe you could get three cars in that yard.
Uh, well, Layton Avenue does have the one-side parking, doesn't it?
But then, but then you get a landscape trailer which is two, and we're parked on that street, you're down to one lane.
It's true, I know, I travel those streets all the time, it's a pain in the neck.
Yes.
Again, in the master plan, is there anything on that, I didn't read the whole thing, nor did I go to the public hearing, is there anything addressing these issues in the master plan?
Uh, parking and, I mean, um.
These issues?
Traffic.
Well, uh.
Well, it's really more kind of like congestion on.
Congestion.
Well, I.
Parking suggestions, et cetera. Parking suggestions, et cetera. Is there, I didn't read the whole thing, I didn't go to the, so.
Likewise.
I'm not sure, um, the, Alex, Alex, is there issues about parking on one side of the street, the other, or anything like that, or in the master plan?
Of landscaping, uh, vehicles being parked on the street where no parking is allowed, but in certain areas that they have to be located, uh, on the property that they're servicing.
Right.
Yeah, but some of these things are like semi-trucks. I mean, they, they can't get, they can't, they couldn't get on the property where they're managing.
So. Following.
So, so, so there is stuff in the master plan to address those points, so let's let, let's let that, uh, germinate.
Yeah, following the adoption of the master plan, we'll be able to work with the elected officials to figure out which recommendations they want to pursue.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, because ultimately, I know we have our interests, but we do have to check in with the elected board and make sure we're all aligned.
Yeah. Right.
Um, so just in the sake of time, we have the term limit task force. Uh, don't think I'm chairing this?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't think it's been instituted, has it been instituted?
Well.
Yeah, it's still instituted.
So, so your, your chair sent an email around to everyone asking who might be interested in a task force. Um, Laura, I understand you are, but which other members might be interested in this?
Well, I have a caveat here. Um, I would just like to know what this task work is, task force is tasked to do, and I, that hasn't really been explained. So I think that in order to form it, we need to know what it's going to do, what, what its purpose is.
Is this something that?
So, so the chair sent this email basically explaining that the idea is to have elections every other year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, pure and simple.
Okay.
So one needs to do some, um, benchmarking, um, and, uh, I know Mark has started, uh, with, um, various groups to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just going back to this.
Um, I just have a question. Is the mayor and the board of trustees requesting this, um, from the planning commission to review?
According to Mark, they are.
Yeah.
I, I checked with Mark.
No, well, hold on. If we, if you remember, we sent a letter asking to have, uh, their, um, have them request that we look into it, nobody answered for obvious reasons. So we then sent a different type of letter, which was basically a new action, giving them thirty days to respond. If they objected to the planning commission to work on it. They didn't respond, therefore they are not objecting to the planning commission to work on it.
I didn't see, I didn't see these letters. Okay, I didn't, I was unaware of the letters.
So the planning commission is working on it.
We should. We should take that approach with a lot of the renewable energy and sustainability issues in this.
Well, sure, that's, that's, okay.
Well. I, I never saw these letters, so I don't know.
So we are now therefore forming a task force.
Okay.
To look at, uh, the issue, uh, the electoral issue and make recommendations
Mm-huh.
as to how to go about it, and we need two, three, four people. Um, some of the things that we thought might be useful, uh, to talk about tonight was to have not just planning commission, uh, people work on this task force, but perhaps some outside members as well.
I think that would be advisable.
Maybe some from ethics, I wonder.
Uh, are we just talking about the mayor and the trustees' positions here?
The bot, the B, the board of trustees.
B O D.
Mm-hmm, and I think salary was also being considered.
B O D. Um, if you guys want to go down that path, I would advise you to separate the issues.
I agree.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay, well, um, yes, I will serve.
I've told the chair that I already had too much on my plate, and I was not, but I have some ideas.
You're not doing it. You're not doing it.
I'm not, no, I've got plenty of ideas I could share, but I'm not working on it. I don't have the.
Nor am I.
Nor are you.
So.
Okay, well, okay, then I am, I'm rescinding my, um.
Oh.
Wait, 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 we're not finished.
I'm rescinding my acceptance.
We still have a couple of guys that aren't here.
We're not, yes, we have other members, and we also have.
Yeah. We, we do. And actually, you know, serving, serving already on two task forces is, is, is a lot for me to handle, so.
We, we. Well.
Upon further consideration, I, I, I withdraw.
Look, Laura, I think you would do a great job on it, but let me, let me share with you some other thoughts on it.
Yeah, I think it's a perfect fit.
Um, um.
I think Mark, this is very close to.
But Mark is really on to the subject.
Mark is on it, yeah.
And, and, uh, and he, um, just going through, um.
Well, if he wants to have other people, then he can, he can do it with other folks.
His notes. Um.
You sure you don't want to be there?
No.
So, so we need, well, look, we need a task force for this, so Mark, we know, wants to head it.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and he needs two, three capable people. Um, not all necessarily from the planning commission, in fact, we have one member of the public tonight by the name of Susan Steinhardt, uh, with a mask standing over there, who is also currently on the, uh, board of ethics, um, who's expressed interest in helping out as a public or non-planning commission person, uh, for this. Um, and the idea would be to possibly coordinate with the board of ethics, uh, if the chair of the board of ethics, um, uh, thinks it's a good idea.
I think that's wonderful.
Um, and I know Mrs. Steinhardt would have, uh, great interest, she has a legal background, uh, has been on ethics for now eighteen months. Um, and, and as a non-PC member, I think would be really useful. So would you reconsider if you had somebody to work with?
Maybe Sue came up to the podium.
Because we don't, we don't want to let Mark, Mark on his own with this, and this is gonna be a challenging issue, it's gonna be a rodeo, but it has to be handled with the right people.
It really is, it really is, it, it is, and, and, no, I'm gonna stand by my, uh, no, thank you.
Okay, good, well, we know, we're gonna, what about you, Bob?
Um, in my reading of history, I never found anything that how they determined the two-year period. The only thing I did come across that when the village became incorporated, it went for vote twice, because there's some objections from village residents, it went twice for voting. But I never came across anything as far as, you know, how they determined how many years they should serve. I did come across something in zoning when I read this book, uh, uh, Crossing the Sound, that minimum zoning when I came here in sixteen forty was four acres. When I read that to the, uh, uh, trustees, the mayor and the trustees, I came in one night and read the article out of it, that was unsubdividable.
Well, I, I, look, at this point, what we need to do is.
Well, Christian, you, you didn't invite, you didn't invite Pamela to be on this task force?
Well, any, any members of the planning commission, again, I'm speaking for and on behalf of Mark, who's heading this.
I'm sorry, yes, of course, okay, Mark.
And, 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 uh, and, and, and we need, we need, uh.
Well, Pamela's been here forever, she knows everything.
Sounds like Pamela's it. Pamela, do you, uh, agree to be on this committee?
Oh, yeah, I, I can do that.
I, I think it's gonna be a really interesting outcome for the community.
It's gonna be very interesting.
Especially if the salaries stay low and, uh.
Well, just to se- separate the issues for me.
The salaries. The salaries.
Right, well, so we'll stick with the term limit, and so we have Mark, Pamela, and perhaps a member from the planning, excuse me, the ethics committee, is. From the public. Mm-hmm.
She's both.
Do you think the ethics board would be interested in having, being a part of this formally? Is that something you'd be willing to do on our behalf? I don't see why not.
I think it would be critical.
Well, if we can have one person, yes, but if it turns into be a whole group with a group, it's just gonna, not gonna work.
No, it, it's true, but as of right now, it's two of our members, so perhaps it's a joint task, well, it's you and.
Yeah, and Mark.
Well, if we have, if we had Pam, if Mrs. Steinhardt is, uh, willing and able to do it, that's in Mark, that's three people.
Oh, it's I do, that's right, not me. Well, we still have Michael and, and, and Ed, and Ed.
And perhaps Mike Anderson may, may.
Yeah, Ed Simononi, Simononi.
Yeah.
Would you ask the other boards, like the, uh, air bee or the zoning or planning?
No.
No, I don't think it's that profound. The ethics is really, I think that's critical.
No, I think it'd be ethics.
I do too.
And I think, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah.
And, and I think it just, for, for tourists, that, uh, is that the right word?
For tourists, yes.
For tourists, that, uh, Mrs. Steinhardt and I discussed this earlier this week, and she expressed immediate interest in it. Uh, makes a lot of sense, because, uh, any attempt from the public to say there's conflict of interest in all of this will be right, uh,
Right up there.
into the board of ethics, uh, purview. So that's the notes I was looking for, and Mark is already in contact with the mayor's association on the topic, and the Suffolk County Officials Association. So he started to do some work, uh, but there's gonna be a lot of benchmarking and, and understanding how the best to do this, whether it ends up with a referendum, or however the task force ends up to figure this out.
Right.
Um, it, it has to have a mission, which I think is simply, um, have an electoral review, which, um, changes the terms such as you have elections every other year, and, uh, that's a pretty simple mission, but with a difficult task.
I'm, I'm curious, has any, uh, uh, what does the town do? What does the town do?
They have, uh, two years for board members, excuse me, two years for the supervisor and four years for board members.
Right.
Okay, don't, uh, the, didn't, wasn't there a recent issue that Snyderman wanted to do something about?
Cause he's termed out, so he wanted to expand the terms, or he had interest in it, um, but I don't think he, he plans on doing that for himself.
Mm-huh.
He might just be for.
For going forward.
The position, yeah, and, I don't know if there's still any interest in it.
Okay, what, what is the term limit for the town supervisor?
Might be three terms.
Six years?
Well, that's a different and additional topic that the task force would work on.
No, no, I'm just curious, I'm just putting it out there for conversation. Does the, does the village have?
These term limits, yeah, yeah. I'm pretty sure it's three.
And, and that would have teeth for you guys to work on.
No, no, I understand, but I'm just curious.
Well, I don't know if the village does have, given how long Mayor Epple has served.
It does not, it does not have term limits.
Yeah.
And there is possibly, um, a desire to, for the, for, to have that, and the task force would need to fair it to all these recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a bad idea.
And you, and you would look at that as part of the task force?
I wouldn't.
Well, I mean, one, one would, one would.
Or are you reconsidering? Or are you reconsidering?
Well, no, no.
You and Pam are a wonderful team.
We are.
All right, first. Citizen.
Member of the public, or a village resident.
Yeah. Sue, would you mind coming up to the podium, so we can, people could hear you? Yeah, come on, get up there, Sue. Yep, introduce yourself, and then take it from the top.
Hi, Susan Steinhardt. I volunteered on a conversation with Christian as a private citizen, um, happened to be on the ethics board. I, I, in thinking about this, it actually makes good sense to have the ethics board in a formal way partner as, uh, on this task force. And I will go back to my colleagues and, and, and see what the response is.
I would appreciate that. I, I do think it's, uh, the smart strategic.
Okay.
We want one rep, i.e. yourself, to be working with that task force.
I will volunteer myself to my, to my colleagues as being the, the person who would represent the board of ethics.
Thank you, that would be great.
But I do think it's a great idea.
It's gonna be a lot of work, um, but I think the outcome can be very beneficial for the village.
I think so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. So, so that's, so Mark, Pamela.
Pam, Sue, that's three.
And we'd have to query.
We have Pamela, yeah, we got that.
And we, and we'd have to query the other two, uh, gentlemen.
Mm-hmm, all right, so to be continued for our next meeting, we can bring up a mic.
When is your next meeting, that you would talk to people?
Um, we're all, we're very informal, and, um.
So that Charles doesn't lose his, uh, mind over this, I will repeat her comments, that she will contact them, uh, in an informal setting.
In an informal setting, and, and we will have a response, um, within a certain, within.
A reasonable amount of time.
Sorry, Charles, I know this is all new to us as well. We appreciate your patience. Okay, so updates on village news and developments. Uh, I know Lynn Arthur, Renewable Energy Long Island, CCA program, this is something that I wanted to bring to attention of the planning commission. CCA, Community Choice Aggravated Solar, these kind of projects are opportunities to, A, reduce the energy, uh, bills of our residents. Um, it's also an oppor- opportunity to perhaps generate revenue for the municipality. Um, the town, for example, has, has put a solar panel, or is in the process of putting a solar installation on their landfill. They're leasing out the land on a landfill, and they will receive several million dollars over the course of a twenty-year lease. Um, we have, uh, similar opportunities in this community, especially if we were to pass battery storage legislation, um, where a, at no cost to the village, we could be putting battery and/or solar projects over our, or at solar, uh, parking canopies and parking municipal lots, uh, municipal buildings. Um, this is something that I know the elected board has taken an interest in. Um, but, so something that Lynn Arthur will be presenting to us, uh, in the future, I hope you all have equal enthusiasm for this. I, I, I do think it could be something that, you know, often a lot of our programs, a lot of things, a lot of the initiatives that the village wants to pursue, we have budgeting issues, but there is real revenue opportunity here.
Really?
Um, at no cost to the village.
You don't have to talk to me, I put solar in my house several years ago.
Right, I knew that was coming, yeah.
I lifted my house in Florida.
Lynn will, will hopefully present soon. I know we had hoped to have her here, um, I, and I apologize, I, I got, you know, I was on vacation, I had COVID, and I kind of got disconnected, uh, but I'll follow up.
Um, I'm just curious, has, has there been any more sites specifically as possibilities?
In this, in the town?
Yeah.
Well, we're working with a consultant, and we've reviewed, uh, several, um, they start off like two hundred sites, but really, when you get down to it, we don't, A, need two hundred.
No.
There are, are sites that really make sense, are low-hanging fruit. Um, the issue is the village, like the town, excuse me, the town, like the village, does not have large-scale, uh, solar code. So, um, we are drafting that right now to, as an enabling legislation to allow for these projects. Um, but we have landfills, we have, um, sand mines, this is, you know, adaptive reuse, uh, opportunities. Um, and we have large municipal parking lots that could all be considered. Um, there are three private battery storage projects that are currently being considered by the town. One in Riverside, one in Hampton Bayes, and one in Shinnecock Hills, Hampton Bayes, by the canal.
Hmm.
Um, but they're not CCA, so they don't give back to the community. They're a part of kind of a renewable energy future.
Uh.
You know, they're a tool in the tool shed, but CCA specifically, which the village could even create a code that says if you're gonna do a battery storage or solar storage project in this community, it has to have a community benefit portion, and that could be a ten, fifteen percent reduction in energy bills, which, we're in zone K. Turns out I know a lot about this and less about parking mobility, so we're in zone K in Suffolk County, which is the highest rate in New York State per kilowatt hour. Um, I think it's like, let's say, twenty-something cents a kilowatt hour. And, um, so this is really advantageous for us to take kind of control of, uh, how we, uh, develop and, and how, how we, you know, consider our energy future, because the utility's looking at doing upgrades to, um, peaker plants, you know, coal-based, hundreds of millions of dollars. There are a lot of other ways in which we can accommodate the grid. Um, so, you know, this is something that we should be kind of in the forefront of, in, in my opinion.
Mm-huh.
Um.
Well, it's interesting that the town is rewriting, is writing a code for this specifically, and, and you're doing it, and I'm sure.
I wonder who. Yeah.
Um, does the village have to have its own code for this?
Uh, that, I mean, that is, I would assume so, yeah, I mean, the way in which our, the village, South Hampton Town Code work is, you have to have legislation in place, sort of, you know.
Right, that, well, that's I come to understand that.
Right, permissible code, I believe it's called.
So, um, is there somebody that's gonna do that? Has it been addressed in the master plan, has, um?
Well, we. We would first have to see if the elected board is interested, which I, I know Jesse has expressed interest, excuse me, Mayor Warren has expressed interest in CCA. Um, but the, the, I don't know if he's fully understood that code needs to be a place to allow for it.
Yes.
And I don't, and the village might have existing code with CCA specifically. No, okay. So there, there is like layers of code that would need to be adopted, such as a CCA, CCA, and then getting a CC administrator. But this is something Lynn would be able to present to us, and then I would recommend following that presentation, that, Patrick, take notes. That, um, Lynn would then perhaps have the opportunity to present to the, the elected board.
Is there an electric board?
Electric, electic, uh, excuse me, elected board.
Elected.
Elected board, you mean the, the B O D, okay, all right, gotcha, all right, well, yeah, let's do that.
Yes, the board of trustees, yeah. B O D. Car before the horse?
Y- well, no, that's a little different, uh, i- if the town is, and you're working with the town and its board on that,
Mm-hmm.
isn't the village better off to see you bring this? isn't the village better off to see you bring this in, 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 into an end with, uh, with legislation that passes before we, the village goes in there?
Well, um, yes.
Helpful, helpful, sure.
It's helpful, but this, this code exists all throughout the municipality, uh, excuse me, also, all throughout New York State.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little bit more contentious here because much of New York State is comfortable with solar panels on ag land. Because of the value in which we see ag land out here, we had to, and model codes are written for the entire state. So this, the language was less, um, appropriate for here. So there's been a little structuring, um, restructuring, but it's something the village could begin the process, um, especially with battery storage, which the town has already adopted. So first, the town, the village could adopt battery storage code.
Okay.
And then, most likely, the town will finish up its solar, same thing, but they would also then see, need CCA legislation, which the town already has adopted years ago. We would want to hire a CCA administrator, which is not a code amendment, a code amendment. This is an organization that does, doesn't make any money on the village.
Couldn't we have a reciprocity agreement with the town on the CCA rather than put another, uh, ad count on the payroll?
Um, well, the CCA administrator would not cost us any money. They make money from the developer. When, when a development occurs, they're making a portion of, off of the cent per kilowatt hour, and that would be in the agreement. Um, but the, the municipality would be paying for that. Um.
But the legislation has to be.
Has to be adopted.
Has to be adopted in order to go forward.
And. Right, and then to answer your question, an IMA, I mean, while it may benefit the village, I don't know how it necessarily benefits the town. So the town, unless it opens up areas of the village that we may want to do development, which, an interesting point, there's an eight-acre parcel, um, man, I don't, off the top of my head, it borders the village on the northwest portion. It currently is a, excuse me, northeast portion of our municipality. It, it currently is a national grid site, and so Nyserta, man.
That's on West Prospect Street.
Yes, okay, I knew one of us would know. So Nyserta has a grant for hundred and fifty thousand dollars available called the Just Transition Grant with zero match. And those funds are to be used to create a redevelopment plan for, um, a site that is either no longer in use or is planned to not be in use for energy, uh, purposes. This site has been identified, it qualifies for Just Transition Grant. So the town, because it's in the town jurisdiction, we are trying to pursue this, so they would write a plan. We, as a planning commission, as the village, would want to have comment and be a part of that discussion, because that eight-acre site could be very well the site of a renewable energy project, um, that perhaps could benefit the village. So there, there, you're right, there is some.
Could also be a tree nursery, couldn't it?
We don't, well, it could be anything, right? Well, I don't actually, I don't know, because we don't know the impacts of the previous use. So they could, it, it might not be able to be, um.
Well, the, the town and the village went into buying a piece of property on North Sea Road and, uh, um, Alder Flane, across the street from McDonald's. I don't know how many acres are in there.
Yes, I, I know what you're referring to. I don't know either, though. And when it comes to tree nursery, there are, I assume, many, uh, well, uh, loved landscaping companies out here who would love to perhaps be a part of this.
Even, even situated in, like Moses Park has great areas where there would be great designation for a tree nursery, isn't it?
Um, look, just to go back on the CCA, um, perhaps, if you already have this in place in the town that you, uh, uh, like, worked on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe that's an easy step to start and have that, tackle that sort of small bite, because if you have too many big bites, you won't get anything done.
Yeah, sure. So, let's, we'll bring in Lynn, who was also works for the town.
Right.
And Lynn would be able to, to answer that question on how an IMA could be formed. She's going to be far more person, far more person than I am.
Well, yeah, that's, sure, one of the aspects, but in terms of, um, what the task, what the planning commission works on, you have to be careful not to have too many projects, because you'll never get anything done.
No.
Um, and that.
It's amazing how term limits made it to the list.
That one, um, is, since you've already done it, you can, um, you can, you can, you can walk this
Feel it.
with your eyes closed, uh, for, for the, for the village, and that would be, that's something to do. And then you can build on it in twenty twenty-three with the CCA thereafter.
Well.
That's just a thought. I just keep it simple.
Well, well, obviously, Christian, I mean, it's all stacked.
To be successful. Right.
But the, but the bottom is the legislation, so.
So I could, I can pursue this on my own. I just want to make sure that the, the planning commission is interested in this, and.
I am interested.
So maybe we should.
I, I think, like.
I think, yeah, so.
We all are.
All in favor of, of the planning commission adding this perhaps to our.
Task forces?
Our, yeah, our task forces and our, and I, and I will have this alone, because I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, you know, qualified to, um, and we'll see how it happens.
And you can always send the board of trustees a no-action letter, you know, uh.
Ah, genius, who came up with that? That, that was some strategic maneuvering. Patrick, you sure you don't want to continue to attend our sessions? Okay, um, Christmas Tree and Holiday Committee?
Oh, I don't know. Isn't there one?
Yeah, I think there is.
There's a group that handles that, right?
No, okay.
Mark Parish and, uh, and, um, former trustee, uh.
The Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, um, um, I know, I sent them a donation, uh, Yawni.
Yeah.
Yeah, Yawni does.
Yawni, Bill, Bill Yawni, yeah.
Are we comfortable skipping that one today for the sake of time and bringing it up at the next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
We got a couple much between now and Christmas.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, updates on the board membership and appointments. Uh, this might be something we talk about at the next meeting when Mark is present, if we're okay with that. Otherwise, I'd love to open this up, but this, this, there's no objection here.
Well, I just have a question. Updates on board memberships and appointments, doesn't that go onto term limits? What board are we talking about?
Well, we're commissioned on a board.
All with boards? Yeah, I know.
So, you know, this is a Mark eight-point-three comment, so let's wait for Mark.
Okay, that's a Mark issue. Okay.
So let's, unless there's any further objections, I, I would like to open this up to the public, since they've been patiently sitting here.
Sorry, I, I think Mark was just simply trying to ferret out if there's any update, which we know there isn't any
Okay. Very patient.
In terms of reappointments of various boards for people who are straggling along, um, Mrs. Davini is one, Mrs. Steinhardt is another,
Mm-hmm.
and there are many in the community are waiting for the mayor to, um, do something that was expected on July first.
Okay, so that's, that's what's going on. Got it, got it, okay.
That's what he meant. That's what it was about. There's nothing there.
It just hasn't happened since, so, okay. All righty, so with that, um, open to the public comment, if, I know we have a couple members from the public who, I don't know if you'd like to come to the podium and have something you'd like to discuss or have a topic of interest.
You know, we were here to, the agenda had mentioned something about the barbeque with servers and that, but things like that.
Yeah. I appreciate that you guys attended the entire meeting and.
It's nice to see faces.
Yeah. I, I got to practice my comedy. It's good. Um, yes, I, I think we, uh, this might be something that's standing on our agenda, and when Paul and D and B Engineering has the time, they do, uh, routinely present, but, um, we might have to be a little bit more clear as to when they're going to present in the future, so not to waste anyone's time. Well, we do appreciate having you.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking forward to that, too.
Patrick, do you have any further comments? This is your only opportunity after that, you're on the clock. Okay, so with that, is anyone on our board have, excuse me, commission have any, uh, further comments? All righty, motion to adjourn, or?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, a second.
A second.
Second, yeah.
All right.
Favor.
All right.
Hi.